Planning Board meeting, we have, I believe, like five items on the agenda this evening. Would you join in a pledge of allegiance? Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands alone nation by God, indivisible, and liberate and honest this world. Okay, thank you. Catherine Wilkornall?
Yes. Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Arena?
Here.
Mr. Kishani?
Here.
Mr. Kosel?
Here.
Mr. Malta?
Here.
Mr. Mixel?
Here.
Mr. Jardina?
Here.
Mr. Artuso?
And Mr. Saccarin is out, he had another commitment this evening.
So with that, let's see, what have we got? The barter, so they're not here yet, I guess they haven't arrived yet, so that was the number one, so why don't you go ahead with number two, Dave?
Webster Woods Car Wash located 801 Ridge Road applicant Mark IV Enterprises requesting preliminary final site plan approval, public hearing to allow four bay wash, car wash on a 2.37 acre parcel, out parcel of Webster Woods Plaza, located in MC medium intensity commercial district under the code of town of Webster.
Good evening. I'm Chris Nadler with Mark IV Enterprises. With me here tonight is Brian Powers, our Director of Engineering, Mike Fogodjewski from BME Associates, he's our project engineer, and Chris DiMarzo, the owner of the property and President of Mark IV. As you know, we've been here for the past three years. At the planning board's request, our engineering team has worked with you to come up with extensive site modifications, arriving at the site plan that you have before you tonight, that I think is a good site plan, that everybody agrees is the best site plan layout for this property that we can, we can have. As you also know, we've received our use variance from the Town of Webster zoning board, we have received an additional area variance from the zoning board. We appeared in front of you last month, went over any outstanding issues, any remaining concerns that you had, and then our engineering team put together supplemental traffic analysis, a vehicle stacking plan, a summary of our internal traffic signage, and I think it's important to note our supplemental traffic analysis, the engineering firm, BME Associates, found as professionals, as experts in this field, that the queuing back to Ridge Road was minimal and did not cause significant delays. No queuing was observed blocking Five Mile Line Road entrance. The entrances and exits were appropriately designed for the volume of traffic to be expected from the car wash. Additional traffic generated by the proposed car wash will not increase queuing on Ridge Road or Five Mile Line Road or internally to the plaza in any material way. Additional traffic from the car wash will not cause any safety issues and that no further modifications, mitigation, or review are warranted. As you can see from our vehicle stacking plan, there's space for 19 vehicles internal to the Plaza Parcel Four, where the site, where the car wash will be located. As you know, we've been here for three years, we've come up with a great site plan, much of which is a result of the planning board's requests and modifications. We're, I think we are ready, willing, and able for site plan approval tonight. We're seeking preliminary site plan approval, followed by an immediate final site plan approval.
So this is three years, huh?
Three years. We'll miss you, but only for a little while, I think, I'm sure we've got something else great coming to Webster.
Chris, yeah, I, I think everybody's gone through all the stuff, read all your current paperwork and so on. Just a couple of questions on this, on the entrance coming into this?
Okay.
Off of Ridge Road, where you loop around, you're coming in, but there's no real defined, I don't know where your driveway is. I can see the, the landscape island dividing the entrance, and then it loops around, and you have two lanes going to the car wash. Yes, okay, Brian can answer that better than I. Oh, I'm sorry, Brian, yeah. Hi, Brian.
Good evening. Is this on? For the Plaza entrance, there's actually, there's two lanes exiting, a left turn and a right turn, and there's one lane coming in. There's a double lane, traffic lane here, which is an exit and enter lane. This lighter gray here is actually new pavement because of how we're grading the car wash property. We're actually redoing some of the pavement along the edge of that entrance lane. And that entrance lane is going to be about 25 to 26 feet wide, a little bit wider than the standard lane configuration, and that would allow us additional room to stack cars if it was necessary, but we don't anticipate stacking out that far.
So will that be in, see, I'm looking at the, at the drawing that you gave us here, and I'm, I'm not really, I'm seeing the, you know, the property line, lot line?
Yep.
And it, and then there's a row of cars perpendicular, east and west, basically.
So the property line, kind of, the way the property line is set is it divides this drive aisle that is along the current western edge of the parking lot. Does that make sense?
No. See, I, you know what you're saying, I'm not seeing, I'm seeing a row, row of cars going east and west, correct? On, on the current property, right there, yep, your finger was almost on it, just go to the right a little bit.
East?
Right there, there's a row of cars, east and west.
Correct. Those are in the, there's a parking, a double park?
That's it, right there.
Parking row, right here.
Okay, so now when you back up, it's about three quarters of the distance of the line, what's the, what's the depth of those, 20 foot?
Probably 20, 20 foot raises, correct.
About 20 foot, so that means they've got 15 feet in back room to back up, looking at the size of it, to the property line. Now, I, you can go further over, but then where is the actual entrance to come in? How are people going to know where they're at? They're just going to drive through the parking lot? You know what I mean?
They will, those coming from Ridge Road will come in, the edge of the drive aisle is just inside of this property line?
See, it doesn't show anything, that's what I'm saying.
Doesn't show, are you talking about striping, are you talking about turn arrows?
Yeah, and, here, tickle, here, I don't know, you've got the same drawing we've got. You follow, see what I'm talking about? You know what I'm talking about, see what I'm saying right here? See, I kind of highlighted the area. The red is your landscape here, I scribbled that in.
Yep.
Okay, then this, here's the cars, so when you come in, how do you get to here? This is defined.
Well, you got two arrows, you have two arrows showing here, one is the in arrow and one is-
So it's from here to here?
Yep.
So this is the entrance then?
Yes.
So that's designated, go ahead and see how that was, as I saw was the property line there.
Yeah, it's, it's just the way the property line falls, and you have the choice of turning into the car wash, or you could continue straight and go across the front of the-
Yeah, alright, so that's white enough, then, alright, I didn't get that. The other thing is, then, and, no, even better, sorry, when you go to your, you've got the, wherever, you know, the toll booth, or whatever the heck you call those things?
Pay, pay booth?
Yeah, the pay booth, those are there, there's two of them, but now, what do you do when you come to the laser wash, is that?
So the laser wash, there's, there's a triple, a triple wide entrance into the car wash itself.
Yeah?
The first two lanes are for the tunnel?
Yep.
The automated tunnel. The third lane is for the laser wash and the two self-wash bays.
So, so, okay, so the laser, you put your money in when you go in there?
Correct.
Okay, 'cause I didn't see a place where you-
There's a pay booth right, there's a little bull nose or a little island that sticks out from the building, and there'll be a pay-
Yep, I see the separation there, yeah.
Yep, there'll be a pay booth in that island.
That's what that is, alright.
Is that striping in front of the pay booth at the same grade as the pavement? Like, let's say I go into that middle lane, and I'm like, oh crap, I wanted to go to the laser wash back, can I scoot left?
Yeah, you could, it's not, it's not landscaped, it's not, it's basically hardscaped, and it's striping that you could drive across.
Okay.
Okay, anybody, anything, any-
Well, as part of this, I mean, you talked about the, the entrance off of Ridge Road, will that actually be striped with arrows?
It, it is actually striped better than this drawing when we were, before, I think it was the zoning board for TC Hooligans, or Hooligans, when they wanted to add on, and that was a requirement that we re-striped this parking lot, and if you go out there today, the parking lot is pretty bright. One more thing we're going to do, and that came out in the PRC review for this project several years ago, was can you put an additional light out at this entrance for nighttime? Because there currently is not a light out here, and the light would make the entrance a lot easier to see for traffic on Ridge Road, so we're going to add a light to that entrance.
How wide is the road between the Plaza and the car wash?
You're talking about the drive aisle here?
Drive aisle, you make a turn to go to the back of the Plaza?
Yes.
Okay.
Or in here?
Yeah.
About 24 feet wide.
Is that adequate for a tractor trailer to be able to turn in there?
Sure. Tractor trailers don't typically come in this direction, they come in, and we provided a photograph. Hooligans happened to be getting a beer delivery the day that we took the picture, and that tractor trailer came in off of Five Mile Line because it's just an easier straight shot for them.
One today at noon came in off of Ridge Road for food, food delivery.
Pardon me?
One came in off of Ridge Road today at noon, I was down there.
Okay.
And it kind of cuts across that, that area there.
Yeah, they're not, they're typically not full-size tractor trailers, they're the 30-foot-
This one, this one was, was 38-foot trailer, plus the truck.
Yeah, they're a 30-foot box, that's what Hooligans gets their beer delivered in?
Yeah, well, they also get the tractor trailers in there.
Well, and the tractor trailers are probably not, have the luxury of, you know, a giant gravel surface to-
Right.
To spit around in, but they're still slow, and, and they definitely dish right where-
Yeah, they're, they're negotiating this turn currently if they're coming in this way, and this turn here is no different than negotiating that.
Yeah, when they come in, they really take that whole thing, too. I watched them today. The other concern I got is all these parking areas opposite the car wash, they fill up pretty good, and they fill up with people going to physical therapy?
Correct.
And they fill up with parents and their kids going to the dance studio.
Yep.
So I'm concerned about, there's no sidewalk or anything for them to walk down and get to their destination without walking right in that, that whole drive lane, and I, I think that's a safety problem myself.
Well, you're, you're talking about them walking kind of across the drive aisle to the sidewalk along the Plaza?
Yeah, they got to get from that area, there's, there's nothing there but parking lot, over to the Plaza. So they have to walk down this street, down the road.
They either would cut across here or come across this opening, which I've seen them do plenty of times, can everybody see that? So I'm talking about the opening is here, in the parking lot.
From, from, from this area?
Yeah, because, and you're talking of Jungle Joe, which is where it draws a fair number of customers, and they're kind of in this, this region of the Plaza.
I'm talking about this area here.
Yeah, you're talking about this entrance here.
Well, I-
You're talking about this entrance and cars that are parked along this area getting out and walking that way. And it's no different than any other drive aisle that's in here, that cars are, are either backing or pulling into the-
Well, yeah, but, except, except that you're going to have a lot more traffic on that drive aisle than you are in the other drive aisles, where people just park in their car. You're going to have in and out traffic.
Are you talking the entrance, Dave, coming into Ridge Road?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's probably, I, that's what I was referring to before, wouldn't that be a good idea, just to stripe it at least, to designate it as a roadway going into it?
You mean between?
Yeah, when you're coming from Ridge Road, you know, somewhere when you come onto the property, can't go out to the road, obviously, but somewhere, once you're inside the property, to designate, if you turn in, you see the yellow stripes, you say, oh, here's the car wash entrance, something to outline it without people-
Yeah, I think I understand the concern, and we should absolutely work with-
Just a matter of striping or something.
Yeah, we can work with Josh to have that piece of it.
Yeah, I think, I think that really should be, there, alright. Dave, I'm sorry, who are you talking?
That's it. Those were my two concerns.
John? Sure? Yeah.
The only concern I had before was with the stacking and the traffic, and it seems like they addressed it. Reading through it, it sounds like you did encounter what we typically find up there, where sometimes you have to wait for the courteous person to stop and let you out, otherwise it goes back up in front of the entrance, what?
Correct.
That's what I was experiencing, I was like, well, you know, getting those cars here. Right there.
Actually, there it is, I just scetched it, I think, something like that. Just where you, where we were looking at, when you guys were over here?
Yeah.
Goes up like this, going to the north, then just flare it where it joins, the adjoining property, that property line, it's flared open, so if somebody's coming in, there's two, a flared area like you're coming right into, it's not a slowdown, it's not a turn, it's just designating it as an entrance.
Correct.
Alright, something like that, alright. Alright, anybody, any else, any other concerns or issues? Mark?
The road behind the Plaza, there's going to be no problem with the tractor trailers and cars going through that back area?
No, absolutely not. I'm sure they've addressed that previously, there's a volume of traffic there.
So in the supplemental information we provide, we actually showed a picture of a tractor trailer, there's, there's no loading docks at the back of the Plaza. So they're not backing in perpendicular to the back of the Plaza, thus blocking the travel lanes across the Plaza. They all pull up to the edge of the curb, and then offload onto the curb and into whatever store or, or business they're going into, leaving the rest of the travel lane open. So they're not completely blocking the travel lane off when they do that.
That was the one concern that I had, I mentioned, I think, at the last meeting about a semi, what's the difference between just a tractor and a semi? Just to, for people that are watching.
I think they're, they're synonymous, I think they mean the, the same thing. A tractor trailer is a semi.
Okay. But I think when you're seeing more of this, this spot is more of a box than a delivery truck, not a truck, there are tables, there are just, it's a box, it's a semi.
I think the biggest stuff is going to Hooligans because of, you know, food delivery and, and beverage delivery. The rest of the stores that are in there are not getting significant supplies delivered to them.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, I got a question. Is this going to be run by Mark IV, or is it a, someone else going to run it for you, or?
At this point, we don't know. We have a couple of feelers out for, for people, but if we don't come to an agreement, then we're, we're more than willing to operate this.
Okay, I'm just curious, you know.
And your elevations, you're showing, you're showing primarily the brick, I mean, you got the ephesus or drive it over the top, what are the, what are those, like, windows that I'm looking at in there or something?
Like, do we have the renderings up here, or?
Look like windows that they're blocked in, type?
Well, they're, you know, they're, you're talking about the darker features that are along the, the north elevation?
Mm-hmm.
Those are recesses in the brick, basically, it would mimic a window, but they are bricked in.
Yeah, okay, that's the way it's drawn, I was curious as to-
It's just so you don't get one long brick wall, you've got some break in the wall.
Is there anything that could be done with that ephesus instead of that on there?
Well, we're trying to-
Just on the north elevation, I know the Plaza's a lot like that, but to me, that just, I don't know.
We're trying to mimic the, the Plaza, we get it look like-
Yeah, and the rest, I'm okay with the whole building, you know, the east and west side, south side, just, you know, facing, and it's closer to the road, you know, and it's, if there's something that could be dressed up better than just that, and there are those two areas.
We can, we can look at it, but again, we're trying to mimic exactly what's on the, on the Plaza. It helps with our maintenance, too, because we're dealing with similar materials between buildings.
Mm-hmm. See, the east and west, it's just mainly-
You know, nowadays, if you don't-
Because proximity to Ridge Road, you know, it just-
If you don't ephesus, ephesus, ephesus is beautiful because you can shape it, you can carve it, you can sculpt it, you get the design that we're looking for.
We do have a brick, too, really.
Yep. But if there's another material, a lot of people are going with either simulated wood, which is a man-made product?
Yeah.
Or PVC, or-
Yeah, whatever, you guys okay, you guys alright with that, I'll leave it up to you then.
It's matching what's, I don't know.
Yes, it matches the building, but see, I'm thinking, being close to Ridge Road, just make it a nicer appearance, I, ah, fine, okay.
That is a long, blank wall.
Mm-hmm.
That's what the point is.
Right. Anything else, anyone?
Can I ask one more quick question?
Sure.
If you're a tractor trailer and you're coming in off Five Mile, and you're scooting along that, the back behind the building there?
The Plaza?
Yeah. And I'm done unloading all my goods, how do I get back out of there, right now?
Go through the car wash?
So Hooligans is here?
Yep.
The delivery vehicle was parked along the edge of the sidewalk here, they can go this way and come out and go to Ridge Road, or they can come out and come this way and around and out to Five Mile Line. I've seen them do both.
Okay, and they can make that turn?
Yep.
Yep.
Again, they're not, full size is a 60-foot trailer, we don't have 60-foot trailers going back there.
Yep.
They're 30s, on a, on a bigger trailer, it might be a 40-foot, but they're not 60-foot trailers. That can't get, get back there, I'll tell you that right now. And having a number of commercial buildings, the track, the tractor trailers that make these deliveries, they know what they can get into these sites. They don't bring the biggest thing they have because they're not going to fight the, the conditions.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Again, this is a public hearing, I should have announced it sooner, but we're under new rules here. Now, if there is anyone wishing to respond to this project, you can call in at 872-7011. Give it a couple minutes, I should have said something before. You have a landscaping plan in there, hopefully, I, I saw the landscape, I don't know one plan from another, but hopefully it looks decent when it's done.
Of course it will, and-
Yeah, I'm trusting.
This is a nice Plaza, and we'll obviously keep it that way.
Signage, signage would be a different application?
Yes, of course.
No, I guess we can go ahead and, want to make a secret on this, Derek?
Sure.
You got to close the-
Well, if somebody calls, I'll just let them go ahead and start.
Motion for an unlisted action, Town of Webster Planning Board, excuse me, Town of Webster Planning Board, consider the request by applicant Webster Woods LLC to construct a car wash located at 801 Ridge Road in the Webster Woods Plaza. The planning board determined that the, that the proposed action is an unlisted action under section 617 of the State Environmental Clouding Review. The planning board determined that the action is subject to single agency review pursuant to part 617.6b1 of SEACR, and that it is the most appropriate agency for making the determination of significance. The planning board therefore designates itself as lead agency for the proposed action. The planning board has given consideration to the criteria for determining significance as set forth in section 617.7c1 of SEACR, and has, one, considered the information contained in the engineer's report for Webster Woods Car Wash by BME Associates dated October 17th, 2019; number two, considered the information contained in the short environmental assessment form, part one, dated October 17th, 2019; number three, considered public comments directed to the planning board during the public hearings on December 3rd, 2019, October 20th, 2020, and November 16th, 2020; and number four, completed part two of the environmental assessment form. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Webster Planning Board hereby determines that the proposed action will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment for the reasons set forth in the attached notice of determination of non-significance. Be it further resolved that the Town of Webster Planning Board is authorized to take all actions reasonable and necessary to file a negative declaration and to discharge the Town of Webster Planning Board's responsibility as lead agency for this action. Be it further resolved that the Town of Webster Planning Board, based on the information analysis above, the reference supporting documentation, the discussions of the actions by the Town of Webster Planning Board has documented in the minutes prior, for this meeting, that the proposed action will not have resulted in any significant environmental impacts. Be it further resolved that the Town of Webster Planning Board therefore makes a determination of non-significance. Be it further resolved that the Town of Webster Planning Board, based on the reasons, based on the above reasons, issues a negative declaration as evidenced by its determination. Second.
Okay, motion, second. Mark?
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Kosel?
Aye.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Mr. Kishani?
Aye. Okay, then with that, since no one has called, I will assume that we will have no comments in regard to this, so we'll close the public hearing portion of the meeting, back to the board, any concerns other than what we've already discussed? No one?
No.
Alright. Alright, so we're open for a motion for preliminary approval for the Webster Woods Car Wash. Anybody want to do it, or? I guess not, okay. I'll make a motion that we grant a preliminary approval for the Webster Woods Car Wash, and I'm going to put the drawing number now, so it's, I just found it, 2552A, and it's a series of them, but that's the first, okay? See, you have that. And we'll make this subject to, put in what we actually, defining the entrance way coming in to the car wash?
Yes, sir.
Okay? That's the only real concern I had. Lighting, let me just touch on that, no lights casting out to the road or anything? Anything that could be like the lights you have currently? Goose, goose neck down?
No.
On the front, right?
Yes.
I just assumed in there, okay. Alright, then we'll make that subject to, any PRC comments for this project, we'll make it, subject to a letter of credit posted with the town, if that's applicable, and subject to Conservation Board, subject to determination of the zoning board for their granted variances, which you've already gotten. And, let's see, six adjustments, none of that, seven, so you're going to approve, there's nothing there. All the improvements to be constructed- All the improvements to be constructed, so it would be number eight. All improvements, construction according to specifications of the Town of Webster. Any roadway construction, that would, we'll just call it that area as being part of that. All roadway construction to be in accordance to specifications, regulations set forth by the Town of Webster. So you're not building roads, but just add that in there for the, highlighting the area. Let's see, I don't know, let's see. All site work to be in compliance with the standards of the Town of Webster. Comply with all requirements of state, county, or town agency. Addressing drainage, which you've already got that for the site. Lighting, we've talked about. Signage, future date, right?
Yes.
Landscaping, you have buffering, buring, snow storage, okay, we're good with 13. Landscape, hardscape, associated finish, grading design for the development was prepared by a New York State licensed landscape architect. And the approvals are subject to the drawing that we stated, 2552A, et cetera. And anything else anybody feels you need to put in there, or pretty much covered?
Yeah, Tony, the light that they want to put out on Ridge Road, is that going to be down?
What's that, Mark? I can't even light.
That they, we were talking earlier about installing on Ridge Road entrance coming in, they were going to put a light out there.
Okay.
Is that going to be down lit as well?
It'll be dark sky compliant, which is the standard for the town.
Okay. Okay, I guess that's it, that's motion, we need a second.
Second.
Mr. Kishani?
Aye.
Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Cosell?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Well, okay, for final approval, we've got it. If they haven't got it now, they're never going to have it, right?
That was a preliminary and final approval.
That was preliminary.
Okay.
We can't do, can't do them both. If Raju was here, he'd be screaming at me.
I noticed he wasn't here, I was going to...
Your second motion, sorry.
Okay, I can take that.
He always wants it that way, no matter what it is, it's...
He is right.
So the second one would be for a final approval, we'll make that subject to the PRC comments. I don't think there's any parks and rec fees. We'll make it subject to all preliminary approval conditions, subject to all applicable governmental fees, subject to all Department of Public Works approvals. Significant construction to occur within one year is deemed by the planning board to expire on November 17, 2021. And this is important, we've got to make sure we do this, and that's to put the conditions of preliminary and final approval should be depicted on the cover sheet of the final drawings, okay?
Okay, it is.
All right? Let's see, the engineer for the proposed project shall provide a letter of certification, all the work was completed. As per planning board resolution, a final approval before a certificate of occupancy will be issued. A letter of credit to the town for the project shall include the fee for the engineer's final inspection of the site, I don't even know if we ever do that, but stone water facilities are constructed, first is doing that anyways, because the site's pretty much all, no downspouts, subject to resolution. Make that subject to the resolution of the final approved minutes. And the approvals, again, are subject to 2552, drawing number. And that would be for final approval.
Second.
Second.
Mark? Okay.
Mr. Kishani?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Cosell?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Now we're all set. Good luck with the project, folks.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. We really appreciate it, and look forward to seeing you again on a different day.
Oh, we ended up with, Chris, with a few more gray years in there. Everything else is still gray. Good luck. You too, folks. Okay, Mark, I get...
Who do we have?
This is number three, this is four.
Number three. Number three of the agenda.
Got it.
551 Wedding Road Pole Barn located at 551 Wedding Road, applicant Stephen Parkinson, is requesting final site plan approval to allow the construction of approximately 1770 square foot pole barn on a 3.70 acre parcel located in an LL Large Lot District under a code of Town of Webster.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
You got all your paperwork in?
Yep.
Everything was good?
Yep.
That's all we needed.
Okay.
Pretty much that. Anything, anybody have any other concerns or interest in this, or? I believe that was the only thing we really held on to, was to have that paperwork submitted for the engineering department, just for the records. And for future sale, if you ever go to sell the property or something, it's on there.
So do I need to do another survey once the building is completed and up?
No, it's just got to be located where your drawing shows. If the engineer, if the building inspector comes over to do inspections, if he has any concerns, he could just measure it and show, because it's on your drawing now.
Right.
He knows exactly where it is based on the approved, okay, beautiful, site drawing, okay?
All right.
We got to give it a final approval. Want to make something, make a motion for final approval, eh? We gave him preliminary, I believe, didn't we, yeah?
Correct.
So just be a final.
Make a motion for final approval.
Yeah, go ahead.
For 551 Wedding Road Accessory Building. Subject to Project Review Committee's comments.
You got to talk into that microphone, can't hear you at all.
Subject to Project Review Committee comments, subject to parks and rec fees if applicable. Subject to preliminary approval conditions, subject to all applicable government fees, subject to Department of Public Works approvals. Significant construction shall occur within one year is deemed by the planning board to expire on November 17, 2021. Conditions of preliminary final approval are depicted on the cover page of the final design plans. Engineer, there's no engineer. We don't need a letter of credit either on that, right?
Yeah, probably, probably should use the law, you know, use it.
Engineer for the proposed project shall provide a letter of certification that all work was completed as per planning board resolution and final approval before a certificate of occupancy will be issued. Number nine doesn't pertain, does it? Letter of credit to the town for the project shall include the fee for the engineer's final certification inspection of the site. Downspouts are going to be just on the ground? Got any gutters on it?
Yes.
And approvals are subject to drawing number...
I think it's a sketch that you presented. It's dated August 19, 2020.
Yep. Project number 2745-2071.
The applicant provided a plot plan. The applicant has provided a plot plan of the property showing the location of the accessory building in reference to sidelines near where the building is on the lot. And the dimensions are shown. The applicant submitted a cost estimate, which is required by the code here. The applicant has agreed to remove one of the sheds, the other is going to stay. I think we're...
The one is down and gone, the other one is just waiting to be taken up.
Yeah, you can use it for storage, why not? Yeah, we agreed to that, okay. And that's it, everything else, you conform with it? All right, that's good.
I'll second that.
Okay. Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Cosell?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Mr. Kishani?
Aye.
All right, now you're all set.
Thank you everyone.
Thanks a lot. Sorry for the delay.
That's fine, as long as we're good to go, hopefully can get it in before snow.
Still got that, we'll get it up. You don't?
Sure.
1041 Lake Road Garage located at 1041 Lake Road, applicant Robert Jones III requesting preliminary final site plan approval, public hearing, to construct a 30 by 30 pole barn with a 12 foot by 30 overhang on a 5.44 acre parcel located in LL Large Lot Zoning District under a code of Town of Webster. Yes, sir.
Well, it's my first time here, so that's what I'm planning to do.
Yeah, just let us know roughly what you're planning to do, I guess.
I think I submitted a sketch, looking to put it 30 foot wide by, it was essentially 42 feet long with a 12 foot overhang, so eaved north to south for gable ends. And the sketch the company did was 12 feet high, and I only want a 10 foot high pole barn. So 10, 10 being the first floor, and then a, and something more than a 412 pitch. But I think they included a 612 in the, in the sketch. So the, on the, from my property, it's parallel to the pool that I have, and kind of behind the trees on the bittersweet side.
Okay, you've got pretty much everything we need to know what, what's supposed to be.
How it is going.
Really should have is a drawing showing the location of it, a tape location map or something. Have a survey, you got that stuff?
I had 19 copies given.
Oh, no, we got that.
The actual, the full size? I have the full size.
No, we don't need full size, we need, well, yeah, I've got the full size.
Okay, you're looking the full size?
Yeah.
Right next to the pool?
Yeah, I see it, I see it there. But that's just drawn in, there's no dimensions.
Well, 30, 30 by 30.
Why you know it? But when this goes into the file, nobody's ever going to know it. It's got to be certified on a drawing, an architect, or the engineer, or surveyor, you can have it on a tape location map, something that shows where that actually is setting on the property. The gentleman that was just here, that was, he, we had the same issue. Number one, number two, you really should have some elevations of the building. We have no idea what the height is of it or anything. Alls I've got is 30 by 30, well, that's in the sketches.
Do you not have sketches?
Yeah, I've got the sketches here, but I don't have a sketch of the building with the...
Yes.
No, I do not.
I probably have, I've got, right here, out of those two.
I sent it, I sent it in an email. I, it looked like I have that copy with me.
What we can do, so what we have, is a tax map that has the full survey. And it's a...
There's a full size?
Yeah, there's a full size one, too, there's just different information on either one. That's all we have about the building. We have no drawings of the building, layout, building elevations, materials of construction. All the other things are on the list of items that are supposed to be submitted for review with the building.
And that was the email that kept it?
And unfortunately, this packet is all we have.
She, she told me I had everything I needed, so I'm not familiar with it.
Yeah, that's okay, it's, it's okay. We can, what we can do is, is we could give a preliminary approval, I guess, and then come back for a final, or we could do preliminary, final, all at the same time down the road. Whichever works better for you.
Yeah, well, we've talked about this before, I mean, these are applications coming in that are clearly incomplete.
That, well, yeah.
I think we need a complete application.
So you got pencil, you want to put down the locations to be, and if you want to have your surveyor do us something that's official, a tape location map, you want to have your architect or your engineer located on a drawing like this officially, and stamp it that we've got something, it was in the file, it has to be where it is. Because down the road, if the person sells the house, when you go to sell the house, you have to have an official drawing of where the house sits, right? Right? You say that, they want to know where else is. Well, you also want to know any outbuilding, where that is, too. And if it was a shed, the shed, you can move it this way, this is permanent fixture.
Well, they, they would, you know, in the transactions that I have had, they, they do that when you're selling, they, you have a new survey.
Yeah, well, that's, but if you have it now, then we know where it is, then the engineer goes out, or the inspector goes out there, he knows where it is, and it's the official spot.
Okay.
You want to have some elevations, something, show us the height of the building, the type of roof, whatever, you know.
Okay, that was in the, okay. That was in the, that was in the email that I sent, so, yeah.
And then that guy has like the estimate and so forth.
Yeah, you should, actually, there's a whole list of stuff. It should be an estimate, you know what? Here. I wonder if I can... I know I've got, you're similar.
I sat down with, and we went over the packet, she said, do you have everything you need?
I've got some where, I know I've got an extra copy of that, but I can't find it here now. Accessory apartment, no, I got, anyway, I said, I don't want to hold this up. You want to have an elevation of the building, you know, drawings of the building?
Yeah, that was...
Because what are we approving? Alls we're approving is a 30-foot square line, you know what I mean?
No, that, that was in the email that I sent.
Yeah.
Of up, east, west, north, south.
Of the building.
Yes.
There was one in there?
Specifications.
Unfortunately, it's not something where we received.
Yeah, I don't have it in the packet.
Really, the best thing to go to for the list of things that have to be submitted are the sections 228-4 and 228-8 of the code.
Yes, if you have an email, I could send it from my phone, so I... No, I have to have colorized, colorized drawings of the, of the...
Well, no, the only thing that we have is this memo. We have a town board thing, we have the non-inclusion.
Well, that's good, we only have it.
Public hearing, a Google map markup, which is not an official thing. We have a blow-up of somebody else's survey that doesn't have a seal on it. We have an affidavit, proof of mailing, and we have a large scale print of...
Or it's just sketched out.
Just a hand sketch, and the big one doesn't have any dimensions on it. There's a written description about the building, but that's it. Things that we're supposed to have are the site plan that show clearly where it's supposed to be marked out, that's prepared by somebody who's licensed to prepare that site plan. Everything else, it's on the list, the building elevations, the building materials, the construction cost estimate.
I can't remember what part of the code that is. Accessory 22538. And I think there, it goes through detail of what's required. I forgot what's on, but anyways, that's...
I was given, I was given a list and went down the list, and had a, well, there had to be 10 or 15 pages in this package that I submitted.
There it is.
They were emailed after, Catherine asked me that a sketch would be helpful, and I emailed her the, this, the sketch from one of the companies. Well, actually, it was multiple, which included the actual dimensions, the elevation, the pitch of the roof. It was colorized, but that's, you know, that...
How about, how about we do this? Since it's not, there's a mix up between what you've given it. Suppose we move forward with it, but you don't get a permit until you submit this stuff to the engineer, we put that in the resolution. That work for you guys?
Well, I think if, if anything we ought to do, we do the previous application. We do preliminary and then come back with the final, and that'll give, if things were emailed later on, that'll give the town staff the chance to find it and send it to us. And if it is truly missing, then...
You said there's some incorrect, incorrect information on the drawings. The height on that, on that sketch that that company did showed a 12 foot ceiling, and I want, I want 10 feet, I don't, I don't need a 12 foot high building.
So you're making, let's see, let's...
I think preliminary.
Suppose we do this, yeah, how about, how about we, we work to a preliminary approval?
Frankly, I think we ought to...
What's that?
I did not receive any of this stuff until tonight. They literally handed it to me when I walked in before tonight.
Well, I had...
Personally, I think, because so much is missing, let's just table it to the next meeting.
And do preliminary file all at once?
Two, two opening all at the same time.
All right, that's why I submitted this in October. I'm sorry. We can put you in for first thing at the next meeting, then, okay?
Okay.
So I, so I need a survey where... Yeah, just a drawing showing, you know, our architect or engineer? Or your surveyor puts it onto your tape location map, whatever way, just so there's something that's official, that stamp that goes into the file with the project, and then that's for future reference, that's all.
Okay.
You need that, you need approximate cost of the project, you know, 20,000, whatever number is and stuff. And elevations of the building, what you're proposing to do. We, we, there was a time we asked for samples of the materials even, but that's gone by the wayside in a sense, so I'm not having to concern with that. Sure, nice neighborhood, you got a nice site back there and everything, you got to put a nice building up, so.
Right.
Is it a pole barn or is it a stick built?
It's a pole, intending a pole barn, but I was actually, the prior owner left me shingles that match my roof, so I was actually talking to one of the companies about putting plywood down and putting the matching shingles on it rather than a metal roof, but I haven't done the calculation, whether I have enough of the plastic shingles or not.
And it was slate look. Oh, yeah, yeah, those are nice. All right, why don't you do that then, okay?
Okay.
And we'll put you for first thing on the agenda the next meeting. Is that December or is that, there would be what, December 1st, is it?
Number one.
December 1st?
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
I'm gonna make a motion to the December 1st meeting, the application for 1041 Lake Road.
For the applicant Robert Jones III, who's requesting a preliminary final site plan approval.
Okay, that's good. Second. Got it? Got a second?
All in favor?
All right, all right. Okay, we're good. Thank you.
I did not receive.
You know, we gotta clarify something.
But I did not receive any emails.
No, I didn't either, that's what I'm saying, but emails are different, emails are not what we should be getting, we need to have hard copies of stuff from the developer, from the homeowner, whoever it is.
I was gonna say the same thing, right.
Because everything that's been sent on an email and expect the board members to be pulling all this stuff out. It isn't the way it's supposed to be done.
No.
All right, well, we could, we could chat about that after the meeting.
Well, I know, but... Go ahead, okay. Okay, we'll let that one go.
803 County Line Road Accessory Apartment is located, 803 County Line Road, applicant William Windhorn is requesting an accessory apartment waivers to legalize an existing in-law apartment by allowing it to exceed the maximum 35% floor area and have an entrance door at the front of the structure on a point 75 acre parcel located in LL Large Lot Zoning District under Dakota Town Webster.
Yes, sir.
Hello, a free fiction option, my name is Jonathan Pacora, I'm his realtor as well as an interpreter.
Okay.
William himself is duck, wanna let him introduce himself. Hi, everybody, my name is William Billy, I appreciate you having me here, I hope you guys are having a good evening, thank you.
Thank you.
So I'd like to request a waiver for the two, as we mentioned, for the accessory apartment. Hopefully being approved, it was approved as the in-law back in the late 80s, the previous owner, I am the third owner, the code of 35%, the structure inside, I believe, is 35% or less than 35%, the outside of the structure is a little bit more. And the second one is the entrance being located in the front of the house, it is already existing, was already there, so just requesting a waiver for both of those. And also, so we can be in full compliance of the accessory apartment with the town Webster.
Okay. Now, what is in it now, he's using it as?
Right now, it's just as an apartment, not as an apartment, as an in-law apartment with a kitchen to it.
Okay, and what is the plan to use it for then?
Have family come over, extra room for the kids to play in?
Yeah.
Is there an interior connection between the main and the apartment?
Yes, there definitely is.
Is this drawing here, it looks like the inside of the facility, is this acceptable? It looks like a hand sketch drawing of somebody that drew, instead of having a...
Well, we wouldn't expect them to have an architectural floor plan of the existing structure, they just are showing us the layout of what already exists.
Utilities and this. Now, is it, is it all under the same utility? Gas or electric?
It is all under the same, one gas unit, one electric unit, yes.
Okay. I don't see an issue with this at all. It's obviously gonna be used by him or his family.
Correct.
Okay. Anybody, any?
No, it's an existing...
Yeah.
Thing that was approved back in the 80s.
It's all on one, it's all on one utility, so it's something...
Kinda grandfathered in, you know?
I don't have any issue with it. Derek, you okay with that?
I'm fine.
I'm fine with that, thank you. Mark, you all right? All right. So how do we interpret this thing, this is to be... Let's see, okay, applicant... All we're gonna have to do is to grant a waiver to legalize an existing in-law apartment. Basically, keep it simple, just use it as that.
I'll second that's your motion.
Yeah, well, do we, do we need, do we need, what, a secret on that or what?
If I have it, we'll do it.
Yeah, go ahead.
Town, what is your planning board consider request by applicant William Windhorn, I'm sorry, Windhorn, for accessory apartment waivers to legalize an existing in-law apartment by allowing it to exceed the maximum 35% floor area and have an entrance door at the front of the structure on a 0.75 acre parcel located at 803 County Line Road, having SPL number 081.01-1-39 in a large lot zoning district. The planning board classifies the proposed action as a type 2 action under section 617.5C9 of the State Environmental Quality Review Regulations, and therefore is not subject to further review. I'll second.
Mr. Anderson?
Hi.
Mr. Arena?
Hi.
Mr. Kishani?
Hi.
Mr. Malta?
Hi.
Mr. Cosell?
Hi.
Mr. Mixel?
Hi.
Mr. Jardina?
Hi.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we grant an approval for 803 Monroe Lane, County Line Road, for the accessory apartment waiver, and make that subject to the waiver, we're making it legalize an existing in-law apartment by allowing it to exceed the maximum 35 foot floor area and to have a front entrance door at the front of the structure and the designated parcel, 803 County Line.
I'll second.
Do we have to say something that it should remain, or it should not be used for regular rental property, should remain?
Well, there's only one service in it. So...
Should be saved just ahead of it.
Huh?
Should be saved just ahead of it.
Yeah, put it in. I don't worry, just, if the apartment is to be used for... Ask him. It's to be, we'll put in a stipulation that it's just to be used for personal use.
Okay.
Personal use, right? Okay, okay, so wait at the end. Good, good. All right? Okay, that's our motion.
Mr. Kishani?
Hi.
Mr. Arena?
Hi.
Mr. Malta?
Hi.
Mr. Anderson?
Hi.
Mr. Cosell?
Hi.
Mr. Mixel?
Hi.
Mr. Jardina?
Hi.
Okay, he's all set.
Perfect, thank you very much, everybody, have a great night.
Okay.
Thank you for your time, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think that covers this, doesn't it? That's everything, the last one? Okay, with that, I guess we're finished for the evening, thanks for coming in.
What are we gonna do about... What about the sign?
For what? What about the sign, I don't know.
Want to table it to December 1st?
I don't wanna table this thing anymore, I think we should be taking this, have them send a letter and have the sign taken down, or have Rod go over there and tell them that sign's gotta come out of there.
Okay.
Should actually make them lock the door up. Which we really should do, but...
What do you wanna do? What's the formal action, is that, if it's not being tabled, does that mean it's being...
Well, I don't know, we should table it, deny the application.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to deny the application for, whatever that is there, what was the name of that?
2235 Empire Boulevard, barter town sign.
Okay, make a motion to deny the applicant until the applicant reappears for a approval.
Second.
And that, that way he's gotta pay all over again.
Mr. Kishani?
Hi.
Mr. Jardina?
Hi.
Mr. Mixel?
Hi.
Mr. Cosell?
Hi.
Mr. Anderson?
Hi.
Mr. Malta?
Hi.
Mr. Arena?
Hi.
The town should send him a letter to that effect.
Yeah, oh yeah, I agree with that, yeah.
Tell him to take the sign down.
The sign needs to be removed, and the request is denied, and the sign has to come down. Yeah, that's it. Now, back to where we were, yeah, I was getting a little hot on that thing there, but...